Just to the states of America to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
Do we have any citizen's statements or petitions? Okay, let's move on to correspondence. We have a letter that was sent on Friday, February 16th that says, my name is Jen Forensey, and I'm taking over for Sarah Dorr as treasurer of the Nipmuck Gridiron Club. We previously held toll booth helmet drives amended for the last few years, and we're asking for permission to hold another one this upcoming year. We'd like your permission to hold this helmet drive at the same intersection of Route 16 in North Ave, and not that she wanted to wait till the last minute. So it's actually Saturday, August 10th, 2024, from eight to noon. And she says, if you have any questions or anything further, please let me know. Is is Jen here? Great. Do you want to come on up? Please, welcome.
How's everybody doing tonight? Thank you.
Thank you for your really on time request.
Try to be proactive the upcoming year.
I think that qualifies. Do you have anything else you want to add besides what you wrote in your letter?
No, I don't know. Aware of the grid. Organization that supports the Nipmuck football players and the cheerleaders. And we try to do as much fundraising as possible and work our way towards our upcoming season and whatever the team needs in order for us to have a successful year.
All right, well, that's great. Does anybody on the board have any questions? If I could have a motion?
All right, I move to authorize the Nipmuck Gridiron Club to hold the annual helmet drive toll road on Saturday, August 10th, 2024, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the intersection of Route 16 and North Ave.
All right. May the second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would just.
I got you.
Yeah, I guess you did. And actually, in addition, Jen, if you would just give the police chief a heads up, just send him an email so that so he's aware, so they're aware that why there were people standing in the middle of the intersection, you know? That'd be helpful.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your first time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Right, next, let's see, are we a little bit?
We're a little early.
Early. But let's let's move on to number five. Consider seasonal license renewal for the Menden Driving Range. So this is to approve the same license common vitular and entertainment Mondays through Sunday for the Menden Driving Range pending the receipt of positive routing slips as we do every year. And I don't know if there's anybody here on behalf of of the driving arrangement, I'm assuming they filled out all the paperwork, which is why.
Yeah, they gave everything to me.
So based on that, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the seasonal licenses common vitular and entertainment Monday to Sunday for the Menden Driving Range 37 Hastings Street pending the receipt of positive routing slips.
Second. All right, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Number six. Let's consider the appointment of Al Chrisfield to the Board of Registars. Al, is Al, you want the you want the meeting remotely?
Yes.
All right, I just thank you for thank you for stepping up and volunteering. There is there is an email in the packet from our town clerk that says, I'd like to have Al Chrisfield appointed as a Board of Registrar member. Please see his affirmative affirmation of intent below. The term is April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2027. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chrisfield? All right, well, then, if there's no questions, can I have a motion to appoint him?
I move to appoint Al Chrisfield to the Board of Registers, Registars for a term beginning April 1st, 2024 and expiring March 31st, 2027.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think it's unanimous. I think I guess I didn't hear Jason. So are you muted or are you just abstaining? All right, well, majority majority approval. So that's number six. John Dudley.
I think. Yes, I'm here.
Hi, you're a little bit soft. If you want to turn up the mic volume. We've got about four minutes to talk about Provinna Street before I interrupt you to open the hearing. So if we don't get it through that in four minutes, then we'll come back to it once we move back to the hearing. So what can you tell us about Provinna Street? I will tell you that I did reach out to to both our state rep and our state senator, asking for them to put an earmark in for $200,000 to help pay for engineering fees for the design of that culvert or small bridge over Spring Brook on Provinna Street. But what else can you can you update us with, John?
Oh, I'm still waiting to hear back from Mass DOT on their and their bridge inspection they did a couple of weeks ago. They did reach out to me today, concerned with the rain we're getting tonight. So that could be an issue, but they're ready to send a team out as soon as there's an issue. The the main reason I wanted to discuss this because two weeks ago I had sent over a proposal from Ty &amp; Bond to start the engineering process for Providence Road. And I've talked more with them recently. And I think it's a good idea to get them on board and have them start the engineering process and collect all the data that is needed to move forward with the repair of this project. And this would just be a starting point for us to give us a base of information, give us three different replacement options with estimated costs, and then from there we decide what we want to do with it. You know, we had talked about using ARPA funds for work as well as Providence Road, and I would like to suggest if that's possible to use ARPA funds, sign them onboarding project started.
Did they, when you discussed, have you discussed this with them at all?
I did.
And did they give you an estimate of what it would cost for them to do this preliminary work?
So, right, the proposal, this preliminary work, we're looking at just under $50,000. There's an outline here on exactly the could be included in that 50,000, but just deliverable. Looking at to do project management, wetland delineation, geomorphic investigation, site survey, geotechnical services, and alternative analysis and conceptual designs.
So do you know if they're qualified to actually complete the engineering requirements to create a design?
They are, and their their estimate for the engineering was roughly $200,000, and this 50,000 would count towards that that 200,000 that they had estimated.
All right, now, I'm presuming, I'll ask.
I did check into it, and it's within scope of procurement in terms of he had secured, I believe, three quotes and that we're we're okay.
No, it's so what there was no three, there was no three quotes on this end, but David, you and I had talked and we.
Yeah, we actually went through the procurement law, and what we determined is that it was on it was within the scope of the procurement.
So you're telling me that this it didn't reach the threshold, you had to get three written quotes?
Yes.
I believe I have the supporting document here that David had given me, but engineering is exempt from those three quotes. There's an exemption.
All right, let's let's suspend this discussion so we can go back to number four. So let me just, because it's 7:40 now, sorry, 6:40, wishful thinking, right? So I can read this aloud. In conformity with the requirements of Master in the Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the Men and Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a poll hearing on March 6, 2024, 6:40 PM in the Upper Town Hall Meeting Room, 20 Main Street, Mendon Mass and remotely. Details for access to the meeting can be found as published to consider the request of the Mass Electric Company doing business of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting figures along and across the following public way, Hartford Ave East, beginning at a point approximately 30 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Charles View Road in Hartford Ave East, and continuing approximately 13 feet in an east direction, National Grid to install an anchor at pole 91 Hartford Ave East. So I'd be looking for a motion as written here. I moved open the poll hearing to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Hartford Avenue East.
Second.
Motion been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now our hearing is open. Does anybody wish to be heard in relation to this setting of this poll and all of its accompanying pieces?
Yes, hi, this is Al Galvin, Design Engineer at National Grid Electric.
Great. Welcome. Thank you for coming to enlighten us.
Yes, this is this is linked with a previous petition we had on the mend the Pope Hill side. And basically, this customer at Six Charles View requested three-phase power, their load demand required that in their request. Unfortunately, there's only single phase for quite a stretch between them and where where it is down the road. So in order to bring that up up to him, several spans of primary cable, three-phase primary cable had to be installed. Of course, in doing so, you're talking about more tension, more weight on the existing facilities. And in this this particular instance, pole 91 is where they're going to cut across Hartford into Charles View. So to support that in line with the new cable there, that's why the anchor is being requested and petitioned.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I believe it would be the people who are installing it or the person requesting it. Can can you answer that, sir? If you didn't hear him, he was wondering who would bore the cost of of doing this upgrade, of putting the pole in and changing it from one phase to three phase?
Yeah, it would be all customer side. I mean, there's probably some instances, if the poles that we're upgrading or the facilities we're upgrading are in a poor condition or of a certain age, we'll generally make those like a system update to help the customer out. But, you know, in this, you know, in this case, anything outside of that, we're adding to the system for their service alone. So they would have to bear a lot of the costs in that case.
Okay, so there's no so there's no cost to municipality just to either the companies that provide the utilities or the customer who's requesting the upgrade?
Right.
All right. Does that answer your question, sir? Anyone else? All right, hearing, hearing, no other questions or objections, I would look for a motion to approve the poll petition?
Do we close the hearing?
Yeah.
I need to close the poll hearing.
Thanks. All right. At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the poll petition.
Do you want us to just vote on the closing the hearing first, just to dot our eyes?
Motion been made in second, and all those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Right. Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're like, ah.
Right, right.
Okay.
Lots of votes. So I'd be looking for a motion to actually approve the poll petition.
I move to approve the poll petition request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Hartford Avenue East, beginning at a point approximately 30 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Charles View Road and Hartford Avenue East, and continuing approximately 13 feet in an east direction, National Grid to install an anchor at pole 91 Hartford Avenue East.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Let's move back to to the to item seven, which is Provinna Street. So at this point, John, you're asking for for $50,000 now to to do this preliminary engineering, and the suggestion is that that you want us to use ARPA funds because you want to do that now rather than later? Is that correct?
Yes, correct. So their their project would, if we started now, we're looking at this whole port, this whole engineering portion that they're going to do is going to be done August. So I think the sooner we jump on this, the better. The the total cost for this would be $49,900.
Hey. Jody, do you want to come on up and sit up with us? We have a couple of things to talk about with this with the funding. And I know you've been very involved in this with with Mike and the rest of us. So I would either Mike Goddard or or Jody, how does that his request fit in the way that you kind of allocated the funds?
First stab?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we slotted 300,000 to highway in a block sum, actually from the land sale account, not ARPA, but it has the same similar.
Effective.
I believe it's effective. It's not dependent on how meeting to allocate the funds. And the thought was, you know, as we've talked about, we never want some to support pavement study, which I think one of the scenarios, and John can speak to this, was considering an additional $250,000. So if you think about the 300 plus the cost of the engineering, you actually kind of cover one of his scenarios that he's waiting to hear back on, engineering. But it wasn't based on the last capital meeting. It wasn't targeting ARP, it was targeting land sale. And so that's the only difference I see here.
Right. And I'm sure, John, I'm sure you're concerned about timing, not funding source, right?
Yeah, my big concern right now is definitely timing. The longer we wait, the more susceptible we are to more issues down there.
So, Jody, in order to access these funds from the land sale, is it sufficient that we do a motion from the board to do that, to authorize that?
I believe so, but I can circle back with Eric just to make 100% sure. That's what I can tell you right now.
Okay, but but either way, whether we do it there or ARPA, the point is we have the money.
We have the extra funds. Even if it's not the land sale, we would just qualify that it's capital project. We'd probably have some scope defined, and that way we can execute. So I would start with the board vote, and if for some reason there's any other requirements, I can follow back with you guys and let you know. Otherwise, we can use an allocation of ARPA funds and use these funds towards something else.
So we could, right, so we could make a move, I could look for a motion now to approve up to $50,000 to begin the preliminary engineering design on the culvert or bridge over Spring Brook on Providence Street.
Contingent on our town accountant. That's right.
Yeah, well, the funding source contingent, but we, right. So, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, John, so you have the you have the money to start that process so we can get this fixed before we have a crisis?
Yeah. I didn't mean to cut you off. I just had one question about the the tie-in bond proposal. So I remember last time we met, we were discussing one of the options being, you know, essentially do it yourself, like-for-like, like replacement. Is that within the scope of this proposal? Is that one of the options?
So one of the options is going to be a liking kind replacement down there, and then there'll be two other options.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
To into following up. So we need the engineering studies required regardless of which execution path we take, right?
Correct.
Because if I'm not mistaken, in previous discussions, I think it was strongly suggested that we not replace what was there, but actually put the box culverts, which are actually have a higher capacity and a longer lasting. Is that right?
Yeah, that was the discussion from Mass DOT when the engineer came out. He recommended after looking at it that we should look into doing a box culvert as opposed to two five-foot diameter pipes.
All right. Any other questions while we have the Highway Surveyor here to talk about the Provinna Street issue?
Did you mention, do you know what the timeline is for this engineering study?
Yep. So their timeline, I think it'll be pushed out a little bit because they were talking their their proposals to have them starting in March. And that would have, and it would have ended in August. So I would say we're probably looking at April to September now.
Okay, thank you.
How does that, how does that align with the
How does that? I didn't catch all of that.
All right, how does that timeline align with the needs in the town? I mean, I think this is, you know, very urgent replacement, and that's what we're working towards. But is that timeline acceptable? And is there anything to accelerate that if necessary?
I can try and, and they know that we're in a time crunch here, so they're going to do this as quick as they can. That's what they gave us, but I would not be surprised if it's sooner.
Okay.
That they get us completed with this.
Our meeting vote would be required to use that source of funds.
The land sale?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, we just flip it around.
Yep.
Because we talked about having various sources available.
Possibility.
Yeah. All right.
The other thing I would suggest is that we probably should make a list of everything we've been talking about, because regarding ARPA, we started, we started, well, I discovered this from Woodward and Current that they had built $82,000 in ARPA.
We got it covered. Yeah, we talked about it the last, the last time. We should actually catch up with Jack and the water folks to confirm, because there's an additional phase three for 100,000. They mentioned in that email that we've also kind of earmarked it. We want to confirm.
I just wanted to make sure, because that was a surprise when we started looking at funding source. And I said, well, did the board approve that? I guess it had been an agreement that had been made before by, you know.
That it was 50, but turned into 82.
Right.
And while we're.
Looking for an additional funding of 50,000 from ARPA, Woodward and Current as part of the next phase, just to let you know.
In addition to the 100?
In addition to the 82.
There's 82 in phase two, there's 100 in phase three, and we've captured it and sort of put it aside.
You know, I just made a quick list, the fire truck, the highway truck, the the survey, if we're doing it, that or the the land sale, the roads, improvement, the water study, which I just mentioned. Now, I don't know if there's, I can't think of anything else that's out there, but just to get a total on it so that you're not, all of a sudden saying, you know, maybe we should.
Yeah, there's a fairly concise list at this point.
Right.
You'll think today.
The majority of allocated. The one other thing that we we've done from an accounting side is segregated the funds once the meeting votes are in. And I mean, the select board votes for a reallocation of or redistribution of those funds, we've segregated those in those accounts within the general ledger to be able to track them and, you know, execute on what was the intended purpose of the money. So.
You've talked to Eric, too, to review, to make sure everything that we're allocating.
Right, isn't approved.
Right, is, right.
Well, we've done what we need to do to take it out of each bucket.
And then it's an approved.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. The the motion we just made, do we need to amend amend that motion now and re-vote it?
Just to be very clear, that we're, I make a motion that we allocate up to $50,000 from our available ARPA resources to pay for the engineering study for the culvert in Providence.
All right.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
And and again, just just to reiterate, in addition to the various sources we talked about, I reached out and I spoke to our state rep, Brian Murray, and I also sent an email to him and Ryan Fatman's office, our state senator, asking them for earmarks. One of the earmarks I requested was $100,000 for water. So let's, let's move on to the replacing highway truck for the one that was in an accident a few months ago. How is the, how was our employee who was driving the truck? How's he doing, John?
He was out of work for two weeks. He's back and working harder than ever.
Okay, let's talk about the replacement of the truck.
So the truck that was involved in the accident was a dump truck. After looking at the the trucks that we have down there, we decided we don't need another dump truck, we need a pickup truck, which actually ends up being cheaper for us. So I started looking around, and I was able to find one at McGovern MHQ, which is on the state contract in Marlboro. He has one on the ground at a cost of fully outfitted with the plow. We're looking at $61,378. If you take the $20,875 away from that, you're looking at $40,503 for this new truck.
John, you have some add-ons there, right? Light bar or something like that?
So there's, there's a light bar, the new plow, floor liners. This is stuff that they put on there, but he said the light bar is two months out. So we're actually going to get our own and install it like we've done on other trucks.
So if you needed a dollar amount for everything you outlined there, that we put a, we tagged like a $43,000 cost in the capital on the capital side, is that going to meet your needs?
Yep.
Forty, well, you said that the net was $45,003.
40,000, $40,503.
40,500.
And that's just the basic setup. So then toolboxes and stuff like that, we would have to do ourselves.
And what what source have we identified for that, for ARPA? Okay. So do you want to make a motion?
I move that we allocate up to $43,000 from ARPA funds to purchase the dump truck replacement, which is going to be a pickup truck.
All right.
Second.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
What's the make here and
of the new one or the? The one they, so the one that was crashed or the new one? The new one. John, what's?
It's a Ford F350, and it's a 2023.
Sure. We can amend the motion to.
I'll amend that motion to purchase a pickup truck per the specs the Highway Survey has presented to the board, which is a Ford F350. With some details, 2023.
All right.
Second.
Motion has been amended and seconded. Is that adequate, Mike? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks very much. John, anything else?
I don't believe so at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's move to number nine, discuss hours for building maintenance.
We had that discussion myself, Jody, Lar, and I believe Jen was there. Uh Laura, and I believe Jen was there.
Whatever you want. Do you want to, do you want to come up and talk about it, Jen, or? A listener.
Oh.
Well, we'll let the, we'll let the, we'll let the acting town administrator act and he can. Okay.
Right.
Um we had a discussion because uh currently Dan is working. I want to say thirty eight hours, it's thirty for parks, five for uh. The water department and then another two that he was given.
Right.
Radio was given by Kim to do town-related tasks. Maybe we started talking about it, we identified a certain number of tasks, which I thought I had 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 here, but I don't seem to uh. We identified a whole bunch of tasks to uh give him the additional two hours, so he's forty hours a week. That's right here, okay? And he came back, uh for example, he's going to assist with the town hall mini split. Library mini split, uh point of contact regarding ordering suppliers, fire extinguishers. We talked about the town hall emergency lights, rekeying the doors. Uh town hall campus, uh the fall removal in the back, he said he'd take care of that. Uh the the decommissioning of the well, he's as part of his water duties as well as for the town hall here. Uh I guess as a broken toy, he's going to fornade all of these little activities for the additional two hours per week. And that could be on a continuing basis, so that he will now get forty hours a week. And I didn't want to do it unilaterally, I thought the board should be at least aware. That we're giving him that additional two hours, not going to change his benefits, because he's already eligible for benefits. It would just, and he has the money in his budget, so, you know, my recommendation to the board would be, let's utilize, you know, he's a great resource, he's done awesome work here. Um give him the additional two hours a week so that he can now be a forty week, a forty hour week employee.
Now, but my my question, and we've had these discussions in the past, because he's he's doing work in different departments out of different budgets. Is, does that impact?
Actually, I take that back, the the. Wasn't coming, it wasn't part of his operating, like he has parks, he has water, and this is coming out of town.
So is any of this an issue with 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 the bargain unit? Have we discussed this with?
I was hoping to do that, and I was hoping to talk to Dan before tonight, and we just haven't been able to connect.
Alright, well, let's let's table this until next week, and let's get that.
That's the idea behind it.
Yeah, that's fine.
We said that, you know, can we all discuss the potential tasks that he could do while he's here, just to get the initial. Believe he had five hours of town. Facilities related uh things that could help or assist the administrator in moving certain projects forward.
Uh I have no issue. For two additional hours. Yeah, we're on the same page about this, but. But, but. But well, the 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 union side, there's also um. I've talked about organizational design, things like that, so I've actually got a call with Colin Center next week, just to kind of exploratory, see. What if anything they can do with us.
Alright.
Um one of the things that I've actually spoke to Jen about is sort of, you know, what does Dan do? And I think I think we really have an opportunity to kind of understand what are the roles we need in town as opposed to, you know. Let's just tack more stuff onto Dan, so I I I'd like the opportunity to have the conversation, bring that back to the board to see if there's something there. It could be as simple as facilitation from their side, to work with the board to say, and just look like. And and to be clear, just just because we would authorize two hours for now, to get these urgent things completed. Doesn't mean that we can't revisit it to to re-task things, but to your to your point, you know, the the Collins Center. Did some of this in their study, also the Divisional Local Services also made some recommendations in their study about this. So this has been an ongoing work in progress that we started before.
Right.
You know, we started a search for a new town administrator, so. We've just got a uh. It's an opportune time to look at it.
Right.
Given some of the uh changes that are going to come up on us, and some of the asks from, you know, our own associates, so.
Sure, but but for now, we're just gonna.
Yeah, I still, and like I said, my intention was to ask, because, you know, I was aware of that issue, basically, to you.
Sure.
About it, and and there was a need to do that, but I just, I thought I was going to be able to do it prior to.
Yeah. Thanks for following up on it, and we'll put it, if we can put it back on the agenda. Laura for next, next time, so we can revisit it in a week.
If we're sticking those two hours to do that work.
Well, at 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 one point, I had been, um it had been suggested by Labor Council to get. To actually check with the unions council and get it, so, but we'll we'll circle back to all of that. Yeah, and get a, right, an acknowledgement, that's all. So. Right. Um alright. I see our building inspector is is uh on the, on the screen, so. Let's talk about an update for um the carriage house demolition, and I don't know, I know you sent, you sent an email with a couple of quotes in the bill. Um can, one of you logged in, can you bring it up on the screen, or do, let's let's start with just talking about it. Um if you could just walk us through it.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, loud and clear.
Yep, great, so thank you, so we had Banner Environmental um go out there last week on on Friday. Um they did all their testing and took their samples, uh we had Darren Johnson, who's their project coordinator there. He was on site with um, I think one other guy, um they did the testing, um they sent it off for testing on Friday. The test, the results came back today, and that's the report that I sent you, uh they did find asbestos. Uh in two locations on the tile flooring, which was probably no surprise. Uh but also in the um joint compound on the walls on the interior of the uh structure. Uh that's the only places they found it, which is beneficial, it wasn't in the roofing material or the windows or the siding. Uh or or anything else there, so um that's probably maybe as good as we could have hoped. I mean, we could have hoped for none, but I don't know if that was realistic expectation, and with that, they've sent over a proposal to remediate. All of the um hazardous areas, and the next step would be to um. I think just discuss uh moving forward with the remediation.
Alright, so I have a, I have an invoice here from Banner for uh eleven hundred and eighty dollars for the uh. For the, for this work, and. Yes, for the, right, for the testing. And that would, that would come out of building maintenance?
Yeah, town building maintenance.
Okay. And then what's?
As well as whatever the remediation of.
Yeah, and now the, now you said Banner can actually do the work?
They can, um that's that's their regular everyday work is doing the testing, but also the remediation. Um we we are under no obligation to use them, we could, we could seek other quotes by qualified companies, but you know, whereas that's there. Um, you know, that's probably the majority of the business, you know, the testing goes along with getting the business, I think. But uh we're not, you know, we're not under obligation to use them for the remediation.
Well, I think the next, again, we'll, we'll go back to the, to the issue of of procurement. What is the, what is the the estimated cost? Or the quoted cost that they gave you?
Eighty seven fifty seven, and in addition, there's a third-party clearance requirement. Where I guess somebody else comes in and verifies that, you know, all the stuff was disposed of in the right locations, I I don't really know, kind of making that assumption. Um and that's estimated at five hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be performed and billed by a different company. But Banner would help us coordinate that, they'd make the arrangements for it essentially.
So it's eighty seven, eight thousand seven hundred fifty seven dollars plus another, you said five hundred?
By fifty, and and that's not creative, but I imagine it's where they do this every day, it's it's probably spot on.
It's under the threshold, you can actually get, you know, issue the.
So we don't have to do free quotes, we can just award it.
Once again, it's 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 not required, but you could actually do that if you wanted to.
I think. Speed is. Time is a critical factor.
Time is of the essence.
And they can, the the certification is what they call a manifest. It guarantees that materials that are taken out of the structure are taken out in such a way that environmentally safe. And that those materials are taken out, just thrown by the side of the road, they have to take it to a facility that will acknowledge the fact that they accept those. Tiles and whatever materials and sign off on it, and that keep, we keep that as a permanent record.
And then, assuming that this work is done by this, by by a contractor. Then would that free up the town to be able to have the carriage house demolished? By, say, the highway department without, so, at relatively minimal cost to the town?
We'll talk about that in a second, but Jody, you had a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as far as um just to kind of echo some of the things that John had said, and um David as well, from a current perspective, sound business practices. Is completely appropriate in this case, um the other thing is I can attest to the work of Banner Environmental, because they're the same company. That we leveraged for the first floor renovation for this building, um they were professional, they were timely. They did a great job um with the actual work product, and I think that the quote's reasonable, given the scope of what they're, they were asked to quote. Um and if there's a conversation that we want to have, you know, offline with them to see, you know. Repeat business can, you know, look at the the goal a little bit closer, that sort of thing, if they can do anything for us, we can certainly do that offline. Um reasonably speaking, I think that it's a a pretty. Um, a pretty good quote.
It's a good solution.
They uh, you got, you want to make sure that that after the tiles are taken up, that there's one more round of testing to make sure there's no airborne. Materials that are released.
Is that, that must be part of their, that's part of the third-party clearance, right? John?
Well, I I, the way, I didn't get into that level of detail, but he, you know, he said, when when they're done, it's ready to be knocked down by anyone. And I I can get clarification on that tomorrow.
Alright, I would uh. Go ahead.
What, so the, I think we talked before about the funding for the testing, so what would be the funding source for?
Should be building maintenance, same thing.
Also, it, there's, there's sufficient for.
Eric, for demolition.
Alright, so I think, I think this is, this is not an everyday. Have a question? Go ahead, Mike.
And this price that we were given, is that written in stone? Is there a contingency in case? In the removal project, they find something else that would take a little ten thousand?
Well, the answer, well, the, well, I think the two things, the answer is that, you know, that they they guaranteed that quote to do this, and they said when they were done. Would be able to be knocked down, and secondly, um you know, our finance director said that they would go offline to see if. They could um negotiate an even lower price than that, so it's not going to go up, that's what they said.
I understand, but in the process, what they're doing, find something unknown that wasn't discovered. And does a change of. That might take him over.
They've identified all sources of, it's a floor tiles and it's.
I mean, it it's a fair point, I think if we have a conversation with them offline, we should explore that as a possibility, and we make a motion contingent on not exceeding a threshold. And if they come back and say, oh, well, if we find something, all bets are off, we have to revisit before we execute.
I I just don't know what else to define it.
I don't know either.
If it's falling in there, has the asbestos wrapping on it, then that's.
Well, there's nothing, it it's a, it's a hundred-year-old garage, so, um there's nothing, nothing like in there, but. I I think to everybody's point, John, we just asked, we'll make it, I'm going to ask for a motion to fund up to the amount of that quote. But if there's anything um that comes up, I would just ask you, tell them to stop, um so we can go back and revisit it. Until.
At the, the point of this.
Additional costs.
The point of this was to identify all possible um areas of uh, you know, hazardous materials, so. There there, there won't be, there shouldn't be, um that's what we, that's what we, you know, contracted them for just now, so. They've tested everything, they, only two, two areas came back as, as being hazardous with asbestos, or, I mean, I guess that's a general phrase, but. You've got the contaminant report, um there there absolutely shouldn't be something, if there were, I'd say they were remiss in their testing.
Well, but, but, but to, to go on, to just follow this discussion. We we've all been in situations where we've been told, told that everything was covered, and then as they dig into it, it's not. So all we're just asking is that, if it comes up, I think it doesn't, I guess it should go without saying, but let's not, let's just say it, that.
And their response to the question might be, I'll put it in writing, and say, thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
The only thing I could think of potentially would be the piles, put down some kind of a heap. Back in the day, people they use. Sometimes.
Well, it's, I think there's a chance.
What what I will, what I will say is that, there is a, there is a twenty-three-page report that that talks about it, what they did. And it does seem, and I I admit, I didn't read the entire thing, I skimmed over it, it does seem to to cover all of the concerns that were raised. However, I mean, I, you know, let's just make the point, if there is anything that will stop and regroup and get it in writing.
So, looking at the proposal, there are a few things that they call out as contingencies, which is contingent on us providing electrical service, for instance. Uh but they don't say contingent on, you know, not finding additional, they don't specifically call that out. Um, I get the one thing that's a uh an unknown in here is the third-party uh clearance, it's estimated at five fifty, so we should probably get a little bit of.
Winkle room, yeah.
Little wiggle room, but not too much.
Alright, well, why don't you make a motion, Brendan, which you think is?
Alright, so we're at ninety three hundred with the estimated five fifty, do you think ninety five hundred, suff- sufficient?
Okay, John Erickson, does that sound reasonable to you?
It it does, um we don't expect it to go up from here, but I mean, I can get a confirmation on that, um like somebody just suggested on the third-party cost. Or maybe just, you know, do another couple hundred to be safe, but I do think, I do think, I do think the ninety five hundred is safe.
Alright, so I look for a motion to uh prove the expenditure up to ninety five hundred dollars to do the asbestos removal and abatement. To get it prepared to uh, to be demolished.
Yep, s- source of funding to be building maintenance.
Building maintenance. Second that. Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks very much. And just as a, as a follow-up, um I had received a, the, I had a discussion with the. With the highway surveyor, who said that once the asbestos was, uh once this step was complete. Um he could both uh remove, uh basically remove the building, get rid of it, and also remove the tar that was recently put down. Between the uh, the the library driveway and the, and the butter. Um as long as the the board put in writing, authorizing them to do that, so we'll revisit this once this abatement is done.
Is there, do we have a timeline for the abatement?
How soon can they come out and get started, do you know?
Um well, they they have a ten-day posting they have to give with to the D E P, um but I believe they're ready to move on it more or less immediately. Um I don't know if uh if I should call them tomorrow and talk and talk to Darren again and give him the okay, uh or, I mean, I can give him the verbal okay. But then somebody's gonna have to sign the proposal.
Alright, well, what, just, is it the proposal, you mean the one that you sent?
Yes.
Alright, well, we'll make sure that's, we'll make sure that's signed, I'll I'll sign on behalf of the board now that we have a motion. And if you want to call and let them know to to get started as soon as they can. That would be great, and can you also give us an update, um sometime ago, there was an issue with some um. A butter's materials or um. Equipment that were stored inside and behind the carriage house, can you tell me what the, what the status of that is?
Yes, so I never saw that material myself, when I went there the first time, there was nothing there to speak of, there was a small pile of plywood or styrofoam. You know, something that we could literally, you know, I could move myself in five minutes. Um, but before that, I understand there was a lot of stuff, I spoke to the owner, um Mr. Babian, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right. Um we did mail him a certified notice to remove anything that's his, uh I stopped by in person to try and hand deliver it, although he wasn't there. But he called me, he was on a business trip to California, I spoke to him last week. Um and he, you know, he indicated that he did have a lot of stuff there, and it's it's no longer there. And there was nothing in place the day I was there a week or two ago, to prevent us from moving in immediately to, to do the demolition work.
Alright, sir. If you want to make sure, we, I had asked also. If you want to make sure, we if uh I had asked also that you uh look into uh where the bounds are. So whether there's a have been a survey done on that land? So that we can verify that the addition is on town land.
Well, the issue was that when the, when the uh, when the property was purchased from the Catholic Diocese of Worcester, and it was renovated, there had been a surveying done then. That that verified that where the carriage house is does indeed belong to the town, and this is on private property, so.
I was just curious to see if there are fins out there, some kind of monumental monuments that would identify with the bounds or.
Uh there were none that I noticed, um I did search our files, we don't have like in in at least in the building department, a complete plot uh uh an actual plot plan, we have, I think, a septic design plan. Uh it's partial, but it doesn't show that boundary, it doesn't show me, you know, typically you'd have an as-built that shows you know, the distance from the sideline to the building, the real line, the front line, et cetera, and we don't have that in our files.
John, did you discuss the the pavement cut in with the butter at all?
I did not. I I can, um this is the first, I'm really, I mean, I know we've talked about can we, should we? But I uh I didn't, I I'll make that phone call tomorrow.
Well, I I do have a question, wha- what what is the the current um requirements for? Driveways and such from the lot line, isn't it ten feet?
It's um I have to look it up, there is a distance, it's either ten feet or twenty feet.
So this this small bit of pavement was laid down between the 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 town-owned driveway and the private driveway next to it, is that correct?
Yes, and so that that becomes a zoning violation, both on the town property and and on his property. So uh it it should, it is a zoning violation, yes.
Yeah, but you're gonna follow up with him?
I will.
Right. Anything else on this matter? All right, thank you very much, John.
Well, thank you all.
Let's move on to number eleven, the uh public safety presentations about the budget for everybody involved, if you want to find a find a space up here at the table, like to come up and um just, please don't take my seat, I'll be right back.
Who wants to take the comfy selections?
Uh all right, well, we will open the ping pong meeting at seven twenty-three, we'll wait for folks to filter in. You have to put the nameplate down. All right, who wants to go first? All right.
Start with police, um not a whole lot of changes with police, we um line item by line them, so salary and wages, uh the only increase in there are contract contractual increases such as steps. Um and educational steps, so that's the adjustment there, along with, um I'm the only contractor that had it signed right now. So with my uh cola, so my cola's in there, um and steps and it's like you call the school, steps and lanes are in there, so that's the difference that you'd see, um not a huge difference right now. Everything else is level services, um except once we get cruiser replacement, so um we did a couple adjustments last year on our expenses, and I was able to get them in line. So I moved to state level this year, every year I renegotiate contracts, most of my contracts are five five years at least, so I can pretty much project out my expenses for five years, um so we're in good shape with my expenses right now. Um even with inflation, I I can say level level funded and level serviced right now, the only problem that we're running into is with the cruiser replacement. Um we're on a schedule that now is over twelve years old. Um and when we started the capital schedule in our operational budget for cruisers um cruisers, um actually I have the cruiser sheets, cruisers were about thirty-eight thousand dollars equipped. So in but when we started this replacement, sixty-five thousand, which is in there, sixty-four-two would cover what we call the cruiser and a half. Um and that's how we could get our operational um rotation to make sure we kept our cruisers up to uh par where they need to be. Um right now, my latest quote I just got today from McGovern, I had been waiting for it. Is sixty-four thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, so cruises have gone from thirty-eight to thirty-nine thousand to sixty-four four forty-eight eighty-five, um so at this point, we need to do something to adjust that, to be able to maintain the cruisers. Um I've been able to play the past couple of years to make sure we, I slide things in and out, but to the detriment of of our actual fleet, so our fleet average miles right now probably about eighty to ninety thousand miles per cruiser, um and when you take a cruiser, you have to multiply it by one point five. Um because we have idle time, the wear and tear that we put on is much different than a regular cruiser, so if you look at a cruiser like my M five has a hundred two thousand miles on it, so in reality, that's like a hundred and fifty thousand mile cruiser, and um select McCooter went actually for a ride along, and he said how great the cruisers looked. We make them obviously ca- take good care of them, so if you look at it from the outside, all our crews look new, we take pride in in our vehicles, we take pride in the town equipment, we make sure we maintain it, but inside of it is a hundred and fifty thousand mile cruiser, and that's the engine too. Um and then repairs start start creeping up on us, so with the numbers that I got today, I did um, I was working with Select and Goddard on some capital. Um I can, I put in there ninety thousand as a rough estimate, but looking at actual uh leases and where I need to be, I'm looking at it probably about eighty-seven-five, so I was able to chop off about twenty-five hundred from that with actual numbers, um that'll get us back in a rotation. Um and I don't, can I mention your capital plan, so our rotation would be to to get into our cruiser leases now, as they've all expired, except the E V vehicle. Um one car would be injected through capital, um and that would get us back on par, and that would get me back to F Y twenty-twenty-seven. Um before I even have to look at any replacements again, so it would give me back everything back in the right rotation. Um and I I was gonna be creative too with the fleet, um just, you know, I don't just take cruisers and replace them, we have a cruiser with with sixty-three thousand miles, so that cruiser's gonna be rotated into the detective vehicle, because when we trade in a cruiser, we get two to five thousand dollars for them, it's it's almost not even worth it to trade them in, um but detective vehicle um is a two thousand fourteen with a actual hundred forty-four thousand miles on it right now. So I would take one of the sixty-three thousand miles, we painted black, we turned to a tech to vehicle, and then we update the fleet. So then we're in good shape even with our extra vehicles, because the extra vehicles aren't included in my fleet rotation. What I do is if if I'm able to, um by rotating the vehicles and we have something low enough that's in good shape that could be used as an admin vehicle or detective vehicle, that don't won't take as much wear and we get more out of it, then I try to do that. Once it gets to a hundred thousand miles, I I'm not gonna throw that into a rotation, it makes sense, so I try to grab something with a little bit lower mileage. Um obviously, the two thousand fourteen has lasted ten years, so the one I throw in the rotation is a two thousand eighteen. You know, if we could get that to two thousand twenty-eight, that'd be great. You know, and that would, then we can look at it again five, five to six years from now, so that's the request I have operationally for the cruisers, just to get us in line where we need to be with inflation and just the costs, the cost goes up anyways, but inflation has has been a big hit the past uh two to three years after COVID with the cruisers, I mean, it skyrocketed. So I don't know if you have any questions about cruiser replacements or the police budget in general?
Satisfied with what you've put together here for this year.
Just to come the fleet, the way Burge has handled the fleet from the capital side, we sort of look at best practice, so we we're probably gonna explore working with other folks to understand. Not not the large vehicle, not the trucks, but as other fleets that we can get into more of a rotation, that's a predictable rotation within the operating budget. We think that probably makes sense to explore going forward. But I think to sum it up, you two new leases and then one purchase outright through capital, is that what? Correct, and then it would rotate into another lease in two years to get all the vehicles in one, and I I even explored instead of doing three-year leases, four-year leases, I actually get a lower rate on a four-year lease and maybe replace more this time, but I would play with that number to see if it could fit in. So I think the other aspect too is, I think we talked about within the cap of the fleet uh cracking within the town, we're gonna put a four-year expectation around anything new coming in, once again, so we're more predictive. And get a, you know, a a line set as to what's coming, and if we can play with it down the road, because we can, great, but then I try to get in more of a model where we know in four years, we're gonna have rotating two, three cars at a time. And and I I brought up the past two years, but I know, like, every year we're tight, so obviously, we had the main ones we have right now, two thousand eighteen's literally two thousand eighteen's, so we're talking about six-year-old cars by the time I replace them. You know, some of them might not be replaced for another year, that's six to seven years, so I really did kind of switch cars around, try to make things work to a point, you know, to kind of have some relief on the budget, but we're getting to a point where we just need to play catch-up, and we could have played a couple of years ago. Um but you know what, I think it would have been wasteful, because we would have had some cruises with lower mileage that I wouldn't be able to do anything with, and we would have got next to nothing. So I wanted to make sure we maximize our trading values. And just so everybody's aware, the targeted uh capital source from the ARPA, so if there's a need to execute one of those immediately without for a town meeting, we probably have that available to us if we all agree it makes sense. And then we have supplemented too, I supplemented the fleet luckily with uh, and as I brought up a grant, we got fifteen thousand uh for an E V. And instead of me going to an S U V or something like that, we we ended up, uh I'm in the E V in town, out of town, I think we paid about thirty-six or thirty-seven completely equipped, so instead of putting me into a sixty-five thousand dollar you know, regular cruiser, I went to the E V. Um we're experiencing the summer, the winter, not so much, so sometimes it's plugging over there, and you see me driving around a regular cruiser, but and I think it's partly from, uh well, Mike, you know, but I said it's stored outside, if I had a garage or something, it may charge faster or may.
It has, it has a lot to do with the, actually, the heat pump in the system and that Mustang. I don't wanna, I I don't wanna crap that with a with a commercial, but um but different different E Vs don't have the same issues as that one does, but that that one was the only one that was a state bid, and that was the only option at the time, but I I do know that there is another grant available now. So it is possible that we may be able to leverage the same thing we did when that was purchased. Um whether it's whether it's for that vehicle, uh for the for police or or fire, or even another municipal one, but that would be great, we'll move that into the mix between now and when we get to town meeting.
No, it works so well, I think admin-wise, it works so well for me, but but like the Mustang and the fleet, it wouldn't work. Right, or maybe a different E V would work, but not saying, and we were lucky to get that at the time too. Um it was actually a chief, we lost funding, and then it dropped off the list, because you couldn't get cars back then at all in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So I got it to begin a two-year-old E V, but it was new, and still had the warranty on it, but I paid the price from two years ago, because every year, no matter what, they drop, they raise the price two to three thousand dollars. So e- even if it's a twenty-one and a twenty-three and they're identical and they didn't do any upgrades, you're still gonna pay, you know, four to six thousand dollars more. So just that makes sense, and you get the same warranty when we go through municipal, so it doesn't matter whether it's a twenty-one or twenty-three, so. All right, so that's that one, uh dispatch is pretty s- pretty straightforward. Um there's an expense line item that that's in there for forty thousand, and then the assessment hit this year for a hundred and nineteen. Um forty number, I've been working with Jody just to narrow that down and looking at we had certain expenses for dispatch that accrued with the new police station, I want to narrow those down to make sure that, you know, we don't have any room there where we can make some cuts, um so I'm, that number won't go up, it could go down in the next next few weeks. Um in the dispatch expenses that were separate, we have, you know, upgrading operating radios on a continual continual basis, so I put capital expenses in there to upgrade, um we have software leases um for security with dispatch and emergency management that's in that that center that we pay for, so there's service agreements. Um we have camera camera upgrades and service agreements for all the, everything we monitor. Um I know Jason was in there, um Select and Cooter, but if you come in dispatch, you want to welcome to the place, it looks like a command center now, we've outfitted it, um we can see all the schools, um so we monitor all the schools in in town for our town. Um we monitor everything around the station, the town hall campus, the parks, so we've made it really a center where we we can watch everything, um we are docked, obviously, from sixteen to sixteen hundred hours to eight in the morning, which, you know, that that's the hours that we have someone come in, but during the day, we do monitor those and record them, and then during emergencies, they're available. Emergency management steps in during hurricanes, natural disasters, and I have them staff in there too, so we do have that all available. Um so I'm just drilling down the expenses, because when Kim had left, we were trying to figure out what exactly that was costing, and then that was estimate, but now that I actually have two years of numbers and data, I can run that and see, see if I can trim that down a little to you guys. Dispatch. So the assessment kicked in, we learned about that last week, it's a hundred nineteen thousand dollars and a little bit of change, which sounds like a lot, it is a lot, but when we left, when we dispatched left, um the budget was four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year plus benefits, so that just so the three years, we paid nothing, so we've saved that already, and now um three years ago, it was four hundred fifty plus benefits, I I can't imagine what it would be right now, so we're still only paying a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for our dispatch services. And I think it's a far better service than what we actually had at the time, so. And emergency management, um that um that I have a question, I think it's twenty-two thousand, twenty-two five extra. Um that I'm not sure about yet, I had mentioned last week the board that I'd like to sit into an executive session with myself and the deputy director and talk to you about uh negotiations for those positions and see on a bigger scale where the town wants those positions to 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 land. Um so that number's kind of out there right now that we can work with, I guess probably the sooner the the better we get and and talk to the the board, both of us. Thirty-five hundred is in a, it barely covers anything that we do on emergency management, and the past few years, I think globally and even locally here in Worcester County, we can see that emergencies are especially with weather and dramatic weather, it's increasing, and we need the coverage and we need to be prepared, and part of emergency management is just preparing and planning, and you know, we've done a lot of that. But um there's still a long ways to go, we just received a hazard mitigation grant for thirty-five thousand dollars um that we're gonna be working with the town, that's hundred percent paid for at state, so we are working to increase our emergency management system.
Have you drilled down at all to come up with a a number yet of what you're looking for?
To that, that was the number, so but obviously, it's, it has to be negotiated numbers, we can tell you what it is and okay, get contracts, but I obviously we can go back and forth and
Yeah.
if we have to phase something in, or if we have to.
Well, I I guess they can't afford it this year, then we look at that. But the the reason I asked is is you you're ready to start talking about it, we don't have to put it off, we can schedule it.
Yep, okay, we're ready anytime, you guys are ready.
All right.
Pardon me, Chief, Jack has a question.
Sure.
Jack Hodgins, um uh with respect to the um staffing for the emergency management. Um could you um give us uh your thoughts on uh in the absence of paid, without getting into details and specifics? Um but in the absence of compensated professionals are we at some level of risk in failing, for example, to be eligible for grants? Failing, for example, to be eligible for relief under those circumstances, as opposed to the current formulation where I gather you, the good many folks are doing this voluntarily.
Yeah. Um we've been probably burning the candle at both ends with this one, um so I've been putting a lot into emergency management, then I have Mark Burkino, who's a retired assistant to the fire chief who lives on the street, who's been my deputy director, and he's been putting a lot into it, and we've actually started increasing with staff volunteers that have helped out, um but again, it can only go so far, and that that's where we're at with it, we're kind of getting burnt out. Um with our own jobs and in that, and it does become tough to 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 manage both of them at the same time, and especially when it takes a lot of your personal time out, you know, I I I don't mind pitching and helping out, we've done it for eight years, but at this point, you know, it just feels that there should be some type of compensation that goes along with it. For all the extra time we do put in with it. But we're not losing the grants, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not gonna use that excuse, we're not gonna lose grants. But we're not losing the grants, you know, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not going to use that excuse. We're not going to lose grants because we're still going to do it. We're still going to make sure we get the grants. We're still going to put in forum. We're still going to do the work. Um, it's just about kind of right sizing departments and setting it up in the future. Cause you have Mark and myself here now. You know, retirement comes, can come sooner than, sooner than you, you know, I've already been here twenty seven years. I don't know who will do it after us if we don't set a precedent now and set the plan up the way it should be.
Got it. Very helpful. So, so it's a public safety imperative. And it's a, and it's a fairness imperative here really, as opposed to we're going to, the possibility of losing a grant. Or if we don't have it or losing, for example, some relief.
I think your, your point is, is there an administrative piece to a grant where it's tied to, you can't get X because you don't have this paid position.
Exactly.
Not that we didn't do the due diligence or put in the work. It's just, is there an administrative piece of we're missing out on something?
Good to know. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, it's more so just going forward, sending the department and making sure that there is a succession plan. Because when we leave, both of us eventually. I don't know if you'll get anybody to do it. And that's imperative in the town. It's a, it's a, it's important position.
Thank you.
Do you, do you find that we're in a similar position to other small towns in the area or do other folks have a, a solid setup?
They don't have solid setups. Um. It's, it's all be, it's, it's really hit or miss depending on the communities. They have either the fire chief or police chief doing it. They usually pay him a stipend and that's it. Um, so. They're really not set up the way we are. We're, I've actually made a department head position, um, that one of the department heads leads. And then created staff underneath it because that's the way it should be. So we're ahead of the game and setup actually. I think we.
Aren't there some, there are some that don't even have it that formal, right?
I mean. But each town is supposed to have.
That's right. Well, yeah, we're, the, the point is you're doing things the way you're supposed to do it. But a lot of the other ones just haven't and it's only a matter of time, I think, before that crisis happens and they don't have the, they don't have it in place.
Well, when an emergency hits and you don't have a plan, you can't execute, right? You know, we, we've had emergencies, we had the Providence Road and we instantly pull all of us together. You know, to work on that. So, you know, we have, um, plans in place for emergencies right now. That's when the other towns get caught up, when something happens and they don't know what to do. You know, and the policies that we've developed, we're still working on them, but I mean, I'd like to dedicate some more time with Mark Bakino to work on them and. And just set, set standards up that, that he likes it carries beyond us. Cause that's really what it's about. You know, we're all short term as it, you know, so.
Any other questions for the police chief or?
Have there been any other, uh, surprises popping up in running the new building in terms of just maintenance costs, operational costs, things that weren't expected?
I know we talked a lot about the HVAC costs last, last year.
Surprise last year. Beyond that, um, it actually seems it's, it's efficient. You know, I, I, I'm trying to work into cleaning schedules and, you know, we have a cleaner now that was, you know, we didn't pay as much before. Obviously the other stations that was worked in the budget last year and the year before, um, the HVAC was a big one. Um, um. I try to stay on top of that though, because you know, when municipal government bids, it's sent, sometimes don't get the best price. So I like to try to stay competitive each year. And if they know I'm checking it every year. Then, you know, hopefully they keep the prices down and just, just don't say, oh, well, I know he's going to pay every year. So ten percent more, ten percent more. Cause some companies do that. But beyond that, there hasn't been, you know, little things here and there, cause we can workman operationally, we can, we can fix things, you know, we, we set up the. The, the training room over there to do conferences like here. So there was, there was budget items there, but that really came out of the town's budget. So it really didn't affect us. But, you know, I think the town's seeing other costs that come with that building too. But, I mean. I think on the other side too, as much as it costs, it's extremely efficient. You know, we burned through so much oil in the other building. It was ridiculous. Like literally every three weeks they were pumping, you know, two oil tanks up, you know? So, and then we run propane over here. So I think it's more efficient, um, with probably going to be savings in the long run. And again, liability, the big reason that building was built is liability. Cells were in no shape to hold anybody. The building was in no shape to house anybody. Um, and I think we're good here for the next fifty years.
Well, in defense of the old building, it served its purpose.
It did. It was a big mandate.
It outlived its purpose. That was something we, we had to do. We had to build that station.
Yeah, no, it, it was what ninety four, Mike, you were on that, right? Ninety four, they did it. So ninety four to.
And there was one weekend we moved everything from the town hall across the parking lot and brought it all in there.
Yeah. And there's still stuff from ninety four that was in there because we ended, I don't know if you guys saw me, we rented a lift. Cause the company wanted to charge us ten thousand dollars to move all our files. So we rented a lift and, uh, had someone hoisting license. And we moved all files ourselves from one window to the next, you know, for a thousand dollars instead of ten thousand. So.
Chief, I know it's come up in the past, um, uh, uh, retention and turnover. Um, obviously being, uh, in instances where officers are, you know, basically attracted to other communities. How, 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 how things sitting right now for you in terms of, uh, turnover?
Best it's ever been, honestly. Um, we have a lot of new officers, um, that are, are blending in well with the community, enjoy being in the community. Half the department's newer officers within the past three years. Uh, we had that hump there where a lot of turnover was happening after COVID. And I think about a year and a half ago. You know, it turned, uh, turned around. I think we had. Three officers leave and it had nothing to do with retention for other departments. Uh, one went to a solar company. Undecided to, um, go in the private industry, doing something else. It was all private industry people. They left law enforcement completely. And we were able to replace them pretty quickly with, with new officers and those offices. Morales, they just, they bring new energy. Um, and they're out there, they're out of the academy now. So that's what I think is bringing the new energy.
Right. Thank you.
Hopefully it continues. I think it's a good working climate for everybody. So, and it's a great time to work for. So, I mean, people, they come here and they really enjoy it.
Yeah. Well, you were anticipating my question to new facility, obviously.
I think that helps too.
Helps, you know.
You know, we actually can have a place to sit down and eat on your lunch break and not, you know, worry about a mouse running by your foot or bugs everywhere, leaking ceiling. Or the heat going off. So it, it does add to, to those extra, you know, those extra benefits, you know, the indirect benefits, you know, besides pay. Having a new station.
Thank you, Chief.
One quick question regarding the, uh, regional nation assessment. Um, is that a hundred and nineteen, uh, the variance or is that the total?
So that is, um, so how we set this up during negotiations, um, there's three is free. And we're going to pay a, a certain percentage the next two years. And then we'd have to pay our assessment. Our assessment right now is two hundred and. Eight thousand. So our true assessment is two hundred thirty eight thousand, one hundred forty four. With the development grant that kicks in for E nine one, we pay half of that. So it's a hundred and nineteen this year. Next year, it's again, going to be two thirty to whatever, two, probably two fifty next year. But starting next year, our cap will come into effect. They negotiated a cap all the way up to year eight and our cap is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's beyond the development grant. The grant only goes for five years. We get an extra three years. And we have Millville probably to thank for it because they would not join the rec without a cap on theirs. I think it's set at sixty thousand. For year five to eight. And then I wouldn't sign without a cap because you were giving them a cap. So we got a cap. So we'll, we'll lock in pretty much at one twenty now for the next four FYs and then we'll have to figure out assessments after that.
But it was, it was essentially negotiated zero last year and it was supposed to be zero again. Yeah. Right. And then they, they made a mistake and it's one nineteen now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you guys saw the email last week. Congratulations. You have nothing. And then, hey, can we talk? No, we, we can't. Tell me.
Tell me now.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? Will we move on to the? Fire chief and his new fire chief and his first budget in front of us at the front of the room? Uh, Nick, did you have anything, uh, on ThinkTom's side? Make sure we recognize folks online.
No, nothing for me. I appreciate the, the chief's presentation. Thank you.
ThinkTom's good. Alright. Okay. Yeah. Alright. So I'll start off with the expenses, passing around a staffing description. Educate everyone a little bit on the staffing of the department before I go into it, get a propose. So the first increase you see is for the contracted services. We recently got a software program that tracks all of our assets, including our products, laws.
Yeah.
Helping with the scheduling. Also there's a simulation, simulation software that we can use for training and officer development. So that's the bump in the contracted services. The equipment maintenance, we purchased a second ambulance last year at the town meeting. We're going to have to get more equipment for that and to maintain it. So that bumped up a little bit as well. Building maintenance, we were hit with a four hour loading testing that's required for our generator. At four thousand dollars, thirty nine and change. So we can't quite fit that into our budget this year. So we're pushing it off as far as we can. We're also switching to a different. Uh, generator service company, because the one we currently have, hasn't been very good to work with. There's been some billing issues and trust issues, we'll say, some of the stuff they said they completed wasn't done. So we've looked into a different company. We think they're going to head in that direction, which is a little bit more expensive than the one that we currently have, but not too, too much.
That doesn't require a new generator or anything?
No, no, it's just, well, not yet.
Yeah.
It might need one if it fails this test, but it's required for, uh, municipal buildings, police, fire, they're required to get that testing done. The next increase that I have listed on there is the medical supplies. Within the first three months this year, we. So we used forty five percent of our budget for our medications, but the increase in cost of medications through the Milford Hospital. So it's been tough. We've been, there's been a long train to use what we need to, but not, but we don't need. Uh, most of the replacements have been stuff that's expired, but we're required to have it on the ambulance. So it's just going to keep happening annually that we have to pay to replace the narcotics, the medications that aren't used. So that, that was another increase and another one, it looks big on, on the budget, but. It's combined with clothing. You know, I think it's uniforms and equipments. Uh, so we added those together at the recommendation of the finance director. We added three thousand to that. Cost of personal protective equipment right now is in rural, uh, coat and pants alone for firefighting is four thousand. Last year we had seven thousand scattered into the budget and. That seven thousands for gloves, hood, it was everything, general maintenance on equipment. So it's, it's been tough to try to keep the stuff maintained. Within that budget. So we just need a little bit more in there.
How often is it required to be placed?
So the, the gear is required to be replaced every ten years. So we're trying, we've been working with capital to see if we can get a plan going to get a schedule going for it. It's all over the place right now. Cause in two thousand eighteen, just before Chief Kessler started, they bought a whole bunch of gear. So that's already past the tough life. So we're trying to build it out for the future to. Kind of stagger it a little bit so we don't have to do a big chunk every single time they expire, which is ten years. And that's for all of our equipment. Usually that stuff lasts ten years, but the gloves and the boots and helmets, they tend to. Wear out before they, before the ten years, which is where that seven, the now thousand. Yeah, the gloves especially, of course, we have to get those quite often. Um, then the other thing on there is the twenty three thousand that was added to the capital for the ambulance. It's in addition to the forty five thousand last year's budget, but that was for the ambulance that was approved at last year's springtime meeting. So that's for the expenses. I don't think I missed anything in there.
Steve, one more question. The medical supply, is that the twenty five thousand dollar line item I'm looking?
Yes.
Okay. Have we thought about, so one is there negotiations with Milford Hospital that we can get into? And I'm assuming yes, but.
They, they have their prices and most of, we have to purchase through them too.
Yep.
Sometimes we can get around and purchase from other places, but per our affiliation agreement, we need to purchase our, some medications through them.
Okay.
They have a full system that we have to pay for them to operate through, through our agreement with them. So that's another fixed cost that's in there.
And I guess, uh, to piggyback onto that, is there a getting together with other towns, uh, you know, Costco bulk discount? Of, I'm assuming there's a replenishment that needs to happen on neighboring towns. Is there anything?
Not that I know of. We don't know real bulk ordering type thing.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have a company that we deal with right now. It's actually a former coworker of mine that is in the company. Gets us a pretty good deal in most of the, the medical supplies.
Yeah. I know some things they are what they are, but.
Yeah. Unfortunately, all the costs of the fire service have been skyrocketing, rocketing since COVID.
Yeah.
So for the staffing, I, for this year's budget, I submitted adding one position. The number you see includes wages. All department, the new position, OIC pay and holiday for the eight positions. Cause they get paid contractually for holidays and if they work the holidays. Uh, this one position would be a day position. It would add someone during the weekday, which is a low point in our call department, which I'll address in a second. That role would be the fire prevention. So that would increase consistency by inspections. We'd be able to do more commercial inspections for the town grow and getting more commercial assets. It's good to get in there, pre-plan the buildings and get a better, better understanding of what's going on. So we're kind of in a situation, Chief Kessler had addressed this numerous times before he retired, that. The call department is weak right now. We have six active and reliable people. Ideally, we should be around sixteen. Demographic in town doesn't want to work as a firefighter. Most people that are doing it, don't do it for the pay. The pay is fairly low as well, but I don't think raising it would really draw too many people in. So we need to start looking forward to adding to career staff that are in the station twenty four seven. Right now we have two firefighters on twenty four seven, which is. Great improvement from five years ago. We didn't even have overnight coverage then. But if this, the two people go out on a call, they're out of the station for forty five minutes to an hour going to the hospital for transport. There's no one in the station. If an emergency comes in, then it's going to be like it was then. Everyone has to respond back from home. So. This is the first step and I think in the future, perfect world, ideally we would have four shift. That way we could staff both the ambulances and have backup firefighters. Uh, there's an OSHA rule, two in, two out. You're not allowed to make entry into buildings until you have four certified firefighters on scene. So if the two people show up technically, then I'm supposed to enter the building until two more.
So right now, if you have two, you have to wait for mutual aid to show up before you can.
Mutual aid or the call department or the off duty full timers. That goes out the window. If there's a life hazard, if there's someone in the building, the two and two out doesn't exist. But for firefighting operation, it, you need to wait until there's two people. I, I count as one of them. I don't need to make entry, but outside with the command, I count as one of the four. So.
Is, is there a cost associated with calling in?
All the towns? No, there is not. We, we provide mutual aid and they give it back. It's mutual.
But then the disaster to go help, which we enjoy the cost and vice versa.
Yep.
But, but along those lines, Mike, there was a time when not every town was in that mutually group, right?
There's.
And that's not.
If it, if it's not mutual, some towns will elect not to provide it. We have a good relationship with all of our neighboring communities right now.
As it should be.
As it should be, but it wasn't always that way.
We've gained quite a bit of respect in the area and we're getting called often to help out at other, other fire scenes.
So any, anything else you have to add or?
I think that's it for now, but.
And you've worked, and I know you've been working with, with. With, with Mike Gardner, with the finance director and going through the, through the numbers. So does anybody have, and, and again, this is still a work in progress, but. You know, we're trying to get prepared because we all know that the annual town meeting is coming up in two months. So we have to vote then, but does anybody have any questions for the chief?
So what you put into your budget right now is the eight career?
It is the eight career. Yeah.
Yep. And the twelve and fourteen is just ideal.
That down the road, I understand that's.
You don't get what you don't ask. Yeah.
Yeah. No.
I hear, yeah. You don't get it. Ask, you don't ask, right?
And you don't always get what you ask for either, but you gotta ask for it.
Fully understand that fourteen is not going to happen anytime soon, but it's, it's a goal that we should set to try to get to.
Uh, yeah, but it, it honestly helps me set expectations of what ideal looks like and know how far we are from that.
Yep.
So.
Yeah. I had a discussion with some of our guys and how we need to do a better job educating the town. What we can provide, doing our services that we have, so.
Just real quick, the two, these are just fully loaded costs. Just real quick, the two, these are just fully loaded costs?
Yeah, that's with benefits, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that include the offset of?
So, yeah, so if we get the day shift position, we'd be able to backfill the day shift, we'd be dropping down to the three people. But we wouldn't have to backfill every single overtime, right now, we have to fill every single shift that's off, we're pay time off and sick time.
And that's not including the summer, so.
That's not, okay.
This is not me asking because I'm looking to volunteer, but what are the requirements of a volunteer?
Willing to volunteer, pass the physical and, uh, complete the fire academy.
Okay.
I've been making a push to try to get people, we had two get physicals today. One last week, so we have probably six on the radar, but only one of them is trained.
Yeah.
It's gonna take probably a year to get trained and certified as a firefighter.
Chief, can, can you just mention, I know we've talked about this before, about the, the change and how they can get trained and where they can get trained?
So, right now, or previously, the only place you could get certified was at the fire academy. And it's up in stow, so you'd have to commute up there three times a week. For people that are trying to be on call, it's tough to have a career and do that for six months straight, three days driving up there. I've been working with my newly appointed captain to build a training program in-house. So we can train them, they'd still have to go test out at the academy, but the six month process would be in town, so it would. Take away the need to drive back and forth all the time, and we could have a little bit more flexibility than the academy has.
Yeah. If, if you're a career firefighter in another, uh, town or city, are you eligible to be a volunteer?
Depends on your career job.
Yeah.
Some places do not allow it, some places do, we have. Four right now that are career firefighters in other places. That's how I started, I was on Bellingham, and I was on call as a firefighter in Menden.
Right, over here.
You like working here?
I do.
Good, welcome.
Well, we like having it. Alright, so I think that's it, that's it for the budget tonight, I know that, that, uh, that we're working to, to schedule. Other department heads that wanna come in, but obviously, um, as we had tried to do in the past, now everything really is accessible. So we can all get a look at it online as we need to see it, right, so if there are any particular ones that, that you see that you, you'd like to come in. Just please give me a heads up, make sure that they're in here between now and when we have to have our hearing, budget hearing.
Yeah, I wanna give props to the finance director for pulling all this together and working with us to, uh, make sure we had all of that access early. So, it, uh, it's definitely helped.
Great. Let's, uh, I think at, at this point, we're ready to move into review a, a draft of the annual town meeting warrant.
So I'm gonna keep the think on meeting open while we review the warrant.
Yeah, and again, this is just the first pass, the, just, just to understand the process, the, uh, the, the warrant. Warrant closes a week from tomorrow, so we'll have a meeting next week to go over it. And that doesn't mean everything needs to be finalized by next week, but every, every article that's going to be on the warrant. Needs to be on there, you know, as a placeholder or otherwise, we may prefer, we may decide not to.
Decide to pass over.
Right, we may pass over or not even, you know, vote them, right, we don't have to, we decide, uh, earlier, but. It's important for the public that's listening, if there's anybody who wants to put an article on the warrant, the ways, the way they get it on is we put it on as the board. Or they would have to get a petition. But anybody who wanted to get something on the warrant that they hadn't come to us and they were planning to do it by petition, they have to get it submitted. By the, uh, you know, by the day that it closes, which is next Thursday, and, uh, and, and the danger of doing it. You know, independently, is it, 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 once it's done by petition, it has to go on the way it is on the petition. So if it's incorrect or invalid, then, uh. You know, they're out of luck, unless they would have.
What's the requirement for a petition? If you understand.
Uh, I think, I think it's five, I think for the, that's a good question, Mike, for the annual town meeting. I believe it's five signatures, five citizens on the annual, or. For a special town meeting, we usually have in the fall, I believe it's, I think it's, I think it's a hundred signatures, I think.
You only need five, five?
So the annual town meeting, but, but it's, well, it's put in, set in place because we have one meeting once a year.
Yeah.
Only vote the budget when, so the idea is not to make it prohibited, right, you know. I, I don't know if it's the bylaw or the mass general law, but I do know it is the law of the land in Menden. Yes, and I can, and if I am, and if I am incorrect, I will guarantee you that there will be. Multiple people that will point it out and fix it, as they should, which is why we're recording and broadcasting these meetings, so everybody knows what's going on. So with, with that being said, I, I, I think folks have copies of these. The, the first, really, when you look at this, uh, right now, we have a total of, uh. Looks like there are. Thirty, thirty three.
Yeah, that's nice.
That?
You had one tonight.
Oh, okay. So, uh, but just, just to walk through them, the, o- obviously, the first, most of the, the first few are ones that have to be there, the, the first one talks about. We have to have a balanced budget, uh, the second one, fix the salaries of elected officials, the third one is, is the budget. Number, number four is, uh, reserve funding, number five is chapter ninety money, which is, which is money coming from the state that goes to the roads. That we have to accept, uh, six is, uh, six and seven. Are for the assessors for, uh, cyclical inspection and update valuation, which is a standard one. Eight is, uh, one for, for, uh, matching funds, and actually, I just wanted to, to, to point out. I know Chief, Chief Cursey, if you can, if you can, uh, reach out, I'll, I'll send you an email, but. When we were at the, uh, Mass Municipal Association Conference, I know there was, um, there's a new department. That's actually providing state, state grant money. For any towns that have the potential to get federal grants, now, I don't know if this is included in that. But along the lines we were just talking about, if you don't ask, um, you, you can't get it, and Quentin Palfrey. Um, is in charge of that, and, uh, and the, the vice chair and I actually met with him at the conference, and he offered to help. Um, and I actually gave his, his email to, uh, to the, uh, the town administrator. So that, you know, I guess all I'm saying is someone should check out, and like, for instance, the national open settlement expenses. All, all of those grants, granting, grant, grant monies, matching funds that we have to come up with. Um, it is possible that we could get those funds, I think, through that, I don't know for sure, but it's worth a request, you know. So that's eight and nine, which are grant, grant, uh, granting. Number ten really is where we, we, we have the, the first one really that's not, um. You know, isn't, isn't, isn't a normal typical article, and this, this number, number ten actually falls in line with a recommendation. That was made by the, uh, Division of Local Services, um, they had recommended, among other things. That we, uh, asked the townspeople to change, uh, the Board of Assessors positions, the three Board of Assessors positions from elected. To appointed, and, uh, the reason that was given for that is that. Um, if we have elected assessors, they have to come from within the town's borders, they have to be town residents. If, if you appoint them, then you can, you can get them from the public at large, from the, from the area at large. And to support that, because it is, it's problematic within the state, um, the governor has filed legislation to allow. Uh, which was not previously allowed, that, uh. We can have regional assessing, meaning that we can actually share resources with other towns and have re, uh, regional assessors, and that's, that's going through the legislature now. Now, we're fortunate in Menden because we actually have, uh, one, one of the three assessing positions had resigned, so it's open, but the other two. I, I, I don't mean to embarrass him, but, uh, Kevin Rudden and Ken O'Brien, uh, are both, uh, trained and certified as assessors. So we're fortunate that we actually have people who are elected, um, who are trained, but. That might not, that wasn't the case for either one of them, when they were elected, they had to put a lot of time in personally to do that. Now, I honestly don't know officially where they stand on this, that's why it's a placeholder, but I, I spoke to the chair. Talked to him about this recommendation, and he said he was gonna, uh, talk to his, to his counterpart, and, uh, and they weigh in on it, and I did let him know. That we're gonna talk about it tonight, but again, it's just a placeholder right now, I really want, would like to have their buy-in, but the suggestion is that. The way that we would write the article is that whoever's the elected assessor would become an appointed assessor and finish out. However long their elected term is, um. You know, in, in their, in their current position, um, so we'll see how they stand on it, but, but this is a recommendation that was made by. Division of Local Services to, uh, make things efficient and, uh, to, to make it easier for us to actually fulfill that requirement.
In the appointment process, how long would your opponent term be?
I, I don't know, that's something I would ask them, I would, you know, right now, it's, it's a, a three-year rotating term, right, right now, there are three positions. One is open, this year, there would essentially be two, two, I, I know that Kevin Rudden has pulled the papers to be re-elected for another three-year term. And then there's, uh, there's another one, which I think had one term, one year left on it, so there would be, so if anybody would like to be an elected assessor. You should go see the town clerk and pull papers, uh, but there is one position open right now, but I, I believe it would be a three-year term. But I don't know what the requirements will be, that'll probably be spelled out in this new law that, that the, uh. You know, to the governor proffered, but I don't know, I don't know what it is.
So what you're saying is probably gonna be set by government or not?
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying for sure is, I don't know. It could be, it could be three years set by the governor, they could leave it up to us. You know, I think it's a lot of di- di- different, uh, appointed versus, versus, uh, elected. So it could be an open-ended term, we may be able to, to set the, set the requirements, but you know, as an appointed position, you know, someone. Like any other appointed paid position, it would be a paid position, you know, they could decide to get a better offer and go somewhere else, but the idea of making it. Regionalized means that you would not necessarily have to leave one municipality to go work at another, which makes it easier to staff it. You know, so, um, and, and that's, so that's number ten. Uh, eleven is a, was a re- request by the Board of Health, um, to, uh, uh, establish a, uh. An enterprise fund, uh, for curbside trash and recycling, and, um, and again, it's just, I'm, I'm going through this. Lightly and quickly, we'll, we'll get more detail in this when we go through this again next week, uh, but the way it was explained to me is. Uh, you know, we have a great many people in town, um, who do pay the trash bill and who, um, you know. Take curbside surfit service from the town, and what the, what the, uh, the Board of Health Chair has told me, it's, it's, uh. As high as ninety percent of the townspeople actually use the town service, there are some that have their own private service. Uh, they pay other than the town service, but the way it was explained is the, uh, our company that picks up the trash. To add those additional ten, ten percent, those additional households would not cost the town any additional amount of money for trucking. Because the truck has to go around all those places in town, and they have enough capacity without having to add another truck. So it's just the additional tonnage, and you know, we do have an issue coming up with, uh, our. Our contract with Wheel Abrater is coming up to be renegotiated, um, and this is something to, to make it easier and actually save some money for the town. But that is, that is what, uh, what, uh. Number eleven is, number twelve is a standard one for the Water Enterprise Fund, which only deals with the rate payers, um, like it, like it has been in the past. Um, you see thirteen again sets the limits like, uh, like every year, so that's, that's a repeat. Fourteen is, is the land use plan, which, uh, which you can, which is the land use committee, fifteen through, um. Let's see, some of these are standard, fifteen is, is the standard, um, for the police debt exclusion. The part that CPC money pays every year, uh, sixteen sets aside the money for the, uh, for the different buckets. Where it's ten percent for open space, ten percent for historic, ten percent for affordable housing, um, sixty five percent budget to reserve and five percent for administrative. There is also, as you can see here, that's in yellow, uh, there's a state requirement, F, FY twenty three number estimates. The surcharge collected, well, it lays out the numbers, again, this is, this is boilerplate, number sixteen. Number seventeen, again, is the affordable housing coordinated position like we do every year. Eighteen is, uh, is, uh, an article for this year, uh, and again, is a proposed. To, to use CPC money for two pickleball courts, a bocce court, a basketball court, and shuffleboard courts. At the site of the proposed new senior, uh, community center, three north half. Number nineteen. Talks about, uh, engineering costs for, uh, for a walking trail here in town. Uh, number twenty is another CPC one for, uh, to, to build a nine-hole disc golf course. Number twenty-one, um, is, uh, for lighting for the basketball and tennis courts up at the parks. Twenty-two. I guess they wanna remove. Bragmites at the Meadowbrook Woods, it's about three thousand dollars, it's, it's, those are plants. Again, more, more of CPC funds, they've already, they voted on this to put this on here, uh, twenty-three has to do with affordable housing. At Providence Street, uh, thirty-four is to, uh, to buy a conservation restriction for passive recreation. At, um. At a couple of places in town, um, there may be another article twenty-five the CPC may have on there. Uh, that they haven't, they haven't, uh, come up with, uh, any additional, uh, details on that, but they will have to do that by next week. Because that's when the warrant closes, um, there is an amendment to, to the, to the bylaws, which says, uh, as it reads here. Uh, we'll have to, um, all citizens petition warrant articles pursuant to Mass General thirty-nine, section ten for inclusion in any town meeting warrant. Must be delivered to the select board office no later than the warrant closing date, um, of such, such a town meeting, rec, do anything there too. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that changes, but this is a, uh. Again, a, a bylaw change. Twenty-seven is a, is a. Supposed amendment. This is for, for three Bates Street, is, is this, is this your, you, you wanna come up for a minute and, uh? Eric, Eric Lodge is, uh, is my neighbor on Bates Street, and I think, is it true that you, did I hear you pull papers, is that?
I did, yes, for planning board.
Do you still need signatures, cause I'll sign them if you don't have them all yet.
Got one right here.
Alright, well, don't leave until I.
Okay.
Sign your papers for planning board, but why don't you tell us about your article?
Yeah, uh, the, uh, the article's a petition on my part, uh, just as I've been involved in the various, um. You know, different projects that have been happening in and around Cape Road and Bates Street. Uh, one thing that has come up ti- you know, kind of time and again, as I was reviewing these different plans, is that the. The zoning line between highway business and rural residential is not abundantly clear at that, at that spot. It seems that the majority of, of the plans that I've seen, um, you know, tend to agree that the majority of my, my house lot is in the rural residential. But on, uh, CMRPC digitizing our hand-drawn zoning map. They put my lot fully in highway business, um, so all of this is to basically just clean up the zoning. Yeah, so.
So, so that, so what you're telling me is that the actual hand-drawn one shows your, the site of your house, which is, which is rebuilt on another.
It's hard to tell on the heart, on the hand-drawn, uh, it's not, you know, super clear. But when we've had, you know, the various surveyor plans that have come in for the different projects in the area. The majority of those are indicating, yes, we're fully in for rural residential.
Like I, I can tell you that in, in nineteen, nineteen sixty-eight, there was no question that that was, that was rural, but uh, anyways. Okay.
So that's the, that's the purpose of uh, my article there.
Right, all right, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, number, number twenty-eight is a placeholder to explore um, the, the rezoning of the municipal land at the, at the corner of Route sixteen and North Ave, really in, in connection with the plans for the senior center. And uh, sure. Yep, well, what I, what I will tell you is that the warrant closes next Thursday and it will be um, it, 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 there'll be at least a placeholder on here. Short answers, I don't know, but again, um, I, I know that others are contingent on that one and that she's working on it. Well, we don't, well, no, I, I think. Yes, yeah, and this.
Put a placeholder in there.
Yeah, there's, and just, just to reiterate what I said, the, the idea of it closing, there has to be even if it's a placeholder, but you know, we can, as long as we don't change the intent of the article and the wording, as long as the intent is on the article. Yes, so the Yes, yes, yes. And it was, yes, it's, it will be on here, it was just, we voted it last week, right, about pursuing it, so that, right. So we'll just, you know, so that's, that's arti- that's the article.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The Chair. Jack, i- i- it is indeed a hundred for special town meeting. It is indeed that for uh, a citizen's petition. It's ten for an annual town.
It's ten for an annual town meeting. And what did I say, five?
But general laws.
So I, so, so double it. You have to have ten signatures for the annual town meeting, but you do need a hundred for the special. So if you're gonna do it as a citizen, it's much easier to do it at the annual town meeting. So. Right, so we're on, uh, now we're on uh, twenty-nine. Um, there is has to do with a, with an overlay district um, to protect a water source. For those of you who aren't aware, you know, we've been working on identifying uh, public water sources to help us provide um, a water source for public water in connection with water and sewer um, for commercial areas in town. Specifically for the commercial districts on Route sixteen and Route one forty, and as part of that they discovered uh, an area that, in, in town that has um, it's, it's an outstanding, high-capacity source that could provide this. But um, the idea is for us to create a district so that we can protect the water, which is the first step. And the water board um, is, is pursuing that.
Is that different from the original three proposed sites?
Yes, um, it's, no, no, it's one of the three.
That's okay.
Where can I get more information on that? Cause I was concerned about one of them. Um, there is, the, the, the plan is available. We'll make sure it's, if it's not up, we'll make sure it's up, but I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And actually that will, and obviously when it closes that, that will be outlined in it, okay, so.
Mike, when you get that, can you share with the rest?
Well, I'll, I'll make sure it gets, I'll, I'll find it. I'll, I'll, I'll just distribute it to the uh, to the FinCon, so you all get it. And then uh, Article thirty, one-time capital screws you for spending for FY twenty-five. This would be sure no, this, the, will be to ensure a level debt capacity and um, probably the easiest way in, in, I'd ask the, the finance director to correct me if I, if I explain this incorrectly. But the issue is, you know, from, from time to time, we have debt that falls off. Um, and we're at a point now where um, our, our debt is, is about to, to change a little bit. And the idea is that, that the state allows for a uh, for a one-year debt exclusion. And there are basically between COVID and a lot of other things like we talked about, the police crews and other things. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to catch up on some of those things and not have long-term debts, just a one-year. Almost like a bridge and it stops us from, from taxes going up significantly because the debt falls off. And we have plans for other, other long-term things, but this is a one-year gap. So the state allows us to do this with, with a town meeting vote and a ballot vote to uh, to allow us to have a, a one-year debt to uh, to actually, again, catch up on some capital things that we can do within that one year. And that's what this placeholder is for.
Just, just a question on the capital project will be noted. Does that need to be noted in the, the specifics in the, or does it need to be noted, I mean, it would be
My intention as well. My understanding is the intention of the article is for a capital project.
Well, cause the thought was if, if this were, say, used for uh, to be applied to, to defray costs in the senior center. If the senior center does not pass, we still don't wanna lose the opportunity to capture this fund, so we wanna.
I wanna be generic enough.
Backup plans in terms of motions to reallocate it somewhere.
Well, there's, there's two things we would, there's two, two ways we could handle that. If it, if we can keep it vague, the wheel, but the other thing to keep in mind. As long as we do the senior center one first, if that was to fail, then someone would have to do an amendment on the floor to change the, to change, so in other words, they could amend it on the floor to a different capital project. But I believe the way it was explained to me, as long as the purpose is for a one-year debt exclusion for a capital purpose. Um, if the townspeople decided to change the, change the uh, whatever was
Yeah.
That capital was spent on would be.
I prefer to keep this capital, so we have flexibility as where it's allocated, depending on where the townspeople vote to.
Well, again, again, it comes down to, because keep in mind that the ballot vote isn't gonna change. Because this is gonna have to be a town meeting vote as well as a capital, so we can amend it.
Also.
But we can't amend
The ballot.
The ballot.
Right.
So we have to word it in such a way, and I know you understand, I'm just, you know, sure.
One-time capital exclusion in the amount of, so we'll put the, the dollar amount in there.
Sure.
And then as defined as a, a capital project per Mass General Law, I think should cover us. Um, I definitely would, you know, default back to council as far as how that should be written. But just like happened, you know, this evening, um, we can look at another avenue if the senior center isn't a go. We can look at the Providence Road Capital Project. We can look at some of the things that we've carved out through the capital plan that maybe were, you know, earmarked for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven and kind of slide those things forward. Um, so I do agree that the generic nature of putting that there would make sense, but we should denote the dollar amount.
Well.
Um, in, in that, so.
Uh, and I, I'm, I'm, I know I'm thinking out loud, but I think the best way to handle this is we need to put in the motion um, everything that we're thinking with an amount. And if for some reason, if we had two different projects, one of them was the senior center and there was a second one. Then what we'd wanna do is call up, out both of those specifically. So that if the senior, senior center was to drop off, cause it doesn't pass. Then we can amend this to do the capital project just for that other one. You know, I, I think it's important to.
Yeah, I'd like to note somewhere is, and you just kind of see a best practice motion. That there's no impact to the current tax rate into the tax base, because that's really the key to a capital exclusion at one time. Is, is that what you explained that it's already built?
Not gonna cost anymore than what we're expens-
So I think that that needs to be crystal clear, that it's not, it's at a zero, zero cost. We're just filling it.
Zero change.
Already linked into the levy. That would be my only other recommendation on.
Right, so for, let me repeat this for my understanding. The motion as written will have generic terms with the only, it'll have specific numbers. It'll have generic terms on the capital project. When we talk, when the discussion part comes up, that's where we will say, that's where the detail will be about the targeted projects.
I think the warrant will be generic, the motions will be specific, but we'll have
Yes, I mean.
Motions, we can amend motions to.
Well, well, again, the only issue is, and I wanna make sure, because it's, because it's this, there's no increase, we're keeping the, the debt load the same. We s- we still have to have a ballot vote, is that correct? Still has to be the ballot as well. So I, I would say to you that we're being, we're saying the senior center right now.
Yep.
Um, but we will be, um, we'll be as specific as we can to still keep the intent the same. But I don't, I don't like the idea of just, well, let's just be generic about it. So we'll, we'll be as specific as we need to be, um, so that everybody will understand.
The point of this is it's move, it's keeping the funds in a place to be used for a capital project. The spending of the money needs to go to a ballot of which that
Well, they both, but, no, it, it both, it has to be approved at both town meeting. Just, just like, just like any, any debt exclusion does.
Yep.
Uh, but the idea that, but what I wanna make it clear is that, y- you know, we have, we had, we have targeted needs. And the state allows us to do this one-year exclusion. The other reason being is, the reality is if we, if we have a twenty-year bond and then the debt drops off, what happens is everybody's taxes drop.
I understand all of that detail.
Okay.
I'm asking more about the mechanics of, what do we actually, what is, what are we actually the town, asking the town people to approve? So are we asking them to approve putting this on the ballot, or are we asking them to approve?
No, this is gonna be, this will be on the, th- this will be on the warrant at the town meeting and it will also be on the ballot ten days later.
Timing wise, cause it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think I know what you're asking. Sometimes the vote is about putting it on the ballot, even though ballots have already been printed, like, it has it, aren't they, I mean, it ha-
No, it has to be, i- in order for it to be a debt exclusion, has to be on the warrant at the town meeting and at the ballot. And, and
So you don't have to do it.
First gate. Yes, but you don't have to do it.
Okay, yeah, alright.
It can't make it to the ballot if it doesn't pass. Well, no, it'll be, no, make no mistake, it, it will be on the ballot, but if it doesn't pass at the town meeting, it'll be, the ballot doesn't matter.
Right.
Although it has happened in the past, if it doesn't pass at town meeting and then it passes at the ballot. We can schedule a special town meeting specifically to vote it again with more specific, more specific, to be more specific about it.
I would expect that on the floor, people are gonna know what the intended allocation are, so if they
Yes.
Go for it on the floor, they're gonna know where the funds are intended to go and the ballot will reflect that as well.
Yeah, okay.
So they're gonna go into the ballot vote with an idea of what the expected expenditure would be.
But the ballots will already, I mean, I guess the, the ballots will already have been printed by the time we have town meeting, so I guess that the specificity needs to be established, or, or what's on the ballot needs to be specified. Yeah.
Right. But, but, but again, as a placeholder right now, the idea is specifically it's for one, one-year capital expenditures in connection with um, some cost to do with a senior center.
It, it honestly, Mike, if, if the um, if the complexity of changing stuff, you could also put in additional placeholders. And if the first one doesn't pass.
Right.
We'll already have it on the warrant, you know, multiple ballot questions.
Yeah, that, that might.
Right, the only issue is each one of them would have to be on the ballot.
Yeah, right.
But, but you're right.
One of them. Hopefully if we get that far.
Right, that's right. Alright, so.
And again, by doing it that way, you just made Laura's life very difficult, but it's for having a bunch of placeholders growing right now.
Okay.
So thirty-one and thirty-two are in connection with the, with the fire department. Said it has to do uh, uh, equipment, but extrication tools.
I, I, Mike, I think thirty-one, thirty-two actually can be removed, cause it was an ARPA source fund, so we should be able to. We're bringing our number articles down now, Laura, you see that, we're taking.
Well, we'll, you know what, but, yeah, that, that's, right now, that's the plan, but we'll see what happens within the next week, right? Right? Right, as we, this has changed so many, so many times. So thirty-one and, and thirty-two again, uh, uh, for um, you know, for the, for the Scott Air Packs. Uh, thirty-three is uh, for Pawtucket, which we, we approved, it's been laid out for a while. But ultimately has to be um, agreed to by the town in order to actually be, make it a public way. And then Article thirty-four, um, based on this current number, is again the, the senior center proposal to, to improve the debt for a new senior center.
And then we'll need a placeholder to um, move money from the land sale account, the highway that we talked about earlier. Twenty-two hundred fifty, so it'll be another placeholder we can give over to Laura.
So thirty-four is not on the, cause she
Thirty-four and thirty-five are not on, but they could become thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two, since those might go away.
Okay.
Might be a net change of zero.
That's zero. Which is exactly why we're talking about this again now, we'll talk about it again next week.
Right, that's right.
Any, any other questions about the uh, I would have been so disappointed if you didn't raise your hand. Yeah, in fact, I probably would have checked your pulse, but um.
identifies the amount of time. It's work that was done.
It's this. E- each, well, it's, it's, it's twenty hours. That's what it's, it's always specked out to twenty hours. And there is a, is, I believe that's within, there is a, there is an annual report that is filed by that person. I know that Bill McHenry had done it previously. Um, and I, I honestly don't know at the moment who has taken his place. I know it was, it was vacant, but I know he moved out of he moved out of state, but he was still doing the job because I talked to him multiple times over the year.
I mean, Ann would be the person to
Yeah.
Reach out to, but the individual that is, CMRC has been working on the housing production plan, been part of those meetings.
Which was just.
I'm just saying it'd be nice if general public, the voting public, see.
It's in the, it's in the report, Mike. It's in the annual report. He writes a report every year that, that is included in the annual report that lays it out. So when people come to town meeting, you know, the annual report that most of them get left on the box, you know, it's, it's in there.
So what you're saying is there's a report?
Yes.
Somewhere.
Yes.
That you can get
Yes.
Finance committee for the meeting.
Yes.
So we know what it says and not be distracted trying to find it.
Yes.
And make a decision.
Yes.
That still works.
Yes, because all of those reports have to be submitted to Laura before they can be printed in the book.
That's true.
So.
So that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So my next question would, my next question would be, can we get poppy out?
Yes.
I, I would all.
I'll wait until the book is published.
Yes.
So Mike, this is still that, that position we talked about in terms of splitting the cost, so I think it's fair to say, what did we get for our money? But I think we also committed to spend this money a year ago. And I think we, 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 we don't need to proceed past this, but.
That's true, but it's always good to.
Yeah, but the answer is.
What we're getting.
Yes, yeah, yes, it's available. It's available for you to read it and see. Yes.
I have a quick question on, on Article eleven. Is there a cap on the amount that installs funding evidence?
Um, when you look at, when you actually look at thirteen? That was your, oh, about the, but, but the, the short answer is, yes, any one of those articles has to be voted with a cap and, and normally the way it works is that um, any money over the cap gets returned into the general fund. So we have an enterprise fund for, for water. And that's, that's the way it works. Any other questions?
Do we need to vote on the senior slash community center prior to Article eighteen?
Possibly.
It would, it would make more sense.
It would, yeah, yeah, so.
I think both seven, eighteen and nineteen are both senior center dependent. So you'd wanna reorder them?
So there are, right, so there are a number of, I mean, what we're trying to do now, that's, that, hence, that's why we're having this discussion. This is the first pass. You wanna make sure that, you know, I mean, the, the order and, and the specific funding sources and the numbers. Uh, we just can't change the intent of anything.
Yep.
Any other questions? It's the only, for the senior center, it's a municipal building. It does not have to be rezoned, is my understanding. But if we were to want to add over fifty-five housing or mixed use, that's why we would have to vote that. So whether, whether that passes or not, um, the senior center is not dependent. So whether, whether that passes or not, um, the senior center is not dependent on that, on that rezoning article.
It, it's, yeah, so they talked about it at the planning board meeting on Monday, it's for, specifically for accessory housing. They actually also voted to table that for this, to not put them in the water.
Well, we can still put it on.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I think the zoning is actually not dependent on the seniors. So we, you know what I mean, they, they, they complement each other, but they're mutually exclusive, yes, right.
We already have the, the frame, like.
Right. Any other questions about um, the draft warrant at this time? Eric Hogg, go ahead, sir.
Just uh, a little bit on my article, Article twenty-seven.
Yeah, that would be tough if the hearing was a month, month and a half after the meeting, yeah. That's a, that's a great point. A- anything else?
I'm good.
Alright, do you wanna adjourn, or do you wanna stick around, or? I'm just, just, you know, all we're gonna do is, we're gonna go through um, um, just a couple of more items, and then we're going to, going to executive session.
Yeah, I think uh, the, you're gonna do the update on the town administrator, right?
Yes, and that, I just, that's a, a pretty quick issue, we have a contract with the Collins Center, um, that goes until the end of June. Help us with the search, we had, we had identified a candidate, um, but uh, he had, after we had uh, made him an offer, he withdrew his candidacy. So now the Collins Center, they have, they have at least one one individual who had withdrawn, originally applied, and now um, has made uh, it known that they, that they would basically approach by the Collins Center and, and give it an opportunity, and the uh, the screening committee wants to interview them. So I guess the point is, the search will continue until, through the Collins Center until June, or until we find the candidate. But it's still ongoing, and the screening committee is aware, and they're supposed to be posting if they haven't posted already. So, great, and that's uh, that's the only update for the, for the town administrative search. And then uh, now I go to fourteen, which is the, the town administrative report.
Uh, just two things, one is uh, put together a, an initial draft uh, for the policy, we're hoping that will simply be just outlining some specifics regarding who's gonna get fobs, how they're gonna be used, uh, recording, who gets them, and whether they're returned or not, we have records about it. It's just a general policy that uh, uh, it still needs to be tweaked, I talked to Dan about it, I sent it through Dan just to have him uh, give some input, and I welcome input from the board as well, uh, regarding, you know, what it is and how it's gonna be implemented, and hopefully that'll be within the next couple of weeks. So I'll bring it back on next Wednesday, and, and if it's okay with you, then we'll implement it and we'll start the process.
I haven't had to use the keys in a while, do the keys still work, or are those all?
The keys will still work for a while.
Yeah, okay.
We'll get all the fobs out, and then we're gonna, we're talking about rekeying everything in here. Uh, second thing, uh, we have the bid opening on the record room on Friday, just to let you know, hopefully it figures out.
How many, how many interested parties?
Yeah, I can. Quite a few, I mean, seven, eight. Eight looked at it, uh, months of the bill, hopefully one will.
I know that process was rocky, so good job on getting all the ducks in a row to get to that point that the state would approve it, and we would get the bid, that's great.
That's it.
Alright.
Couple of things, um. You'd mentioned last, we were putting it together sort of a, I mean, David's with us through March, so one of the things we're talking about is how do you transition, so you're putting together a list of the, the projects you're working on?
I do, I, I have been having, just, you know, they're cryptic at this point, but.
When can we expect it though, to see it, cause one of the things, I think, was how do we plan coverage in the event that the VA serves.
Yeah.
And the other thing I was thinking about was um, more of an agenda topic, you know, give it, not, not so much, I guess you made me think of it with the, the planning board decision, but I think ARPA is the other thing, is we should probably sit down, planning and water and jack, just to clarify what the water needs are, or expectations or an ARPA funds are.
Okay.
Cause we, we've sort of parked them, but I think we wanna get clarity as to who's, is everybody trying to use the same funding?
Yeah.
Just clarify that.
I think there's some duplicity there.
Yeah, and then maybe we can even talk about the zoning, cause that, that looked, looked like to know more about why we wouldn't be pursuing it. Because regardless of senior center or otherwise, I mean, that land is articulating a vision for the use of that lot is sort of something we talked about last time, that'll have to get some heads together on and figure out, if we're not gonna put this forward from a zoning perspective, wh- what are you thinking, like, why wouldn't we? Just to, to move on it. Just, just to clarify the discussion, so no one on that board was against it per se, they were thinking that it would have less chance to pass in the mix of everything else, they had to break it out.
I would, I would argue that you've got a lot of things that complement each other on this warrant.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's, I, I understand why there was still that way, especially the, the history of it. But I, I really think when you drill down, it's actually the opposite, that, you know.
It would be another year, cause I mean, this, this really should be on an annual town meeting and not a special town meeting.
That, yeah, that was the discussion as I witnessed.
Thank you, alright.
Alright, uh, can I get a motion to close the FinCon meeting? Uh, discussion, who was in favor?
I look.
I. Eight forty-seven.
Alright.
Thank you, folks.
I have a mo- a motion to enter into executive session, purpose two, Mass General Law, section, I'm sorry, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiate with non-using personnel, town administrator contract, and purpose three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if then an open session, it may have detrimental effect on bargaining, and then highway department, local union two seventy-two, amend in town hall, union local two seventy-two.
That, was that the motion?
It's the motion.
Second.
Are we gonna adjourn?
Uh, we're just, we're, we're, we're only, we're, we're not going, we're gonna, we're not gonna come back to this. What you made the second, a roll call vote, uh, Morales, I.
Frucos, I.
I.
Chanel, I.
Cooter, I, can uh, someone just uh, chat me on the computer or something, I guess it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll uh, chat you on the computer, okay, I can do that.
Uh, just as long as I can hear the room, I, yeah.
Would you rather do a breakout room, I could do that thing?
You can do that too.
Alright.
Hotel.
Eric, so we're gonna go on executive session, so um, at, at this point, the public isn't, is no longer welcome. I get it, oh, let me, yeah, no, no, well, we're, we're getting our act together there anyways.